We will have our invocation by Reverend James Vickers, pastor of Mount Tamo Baptist Church. Reverend Vickers, can you also lead us in the pledge?
Let us pray. Our precious and gracious Father, we are thankful for this day. We thank you, Father, for all of the blessings you bestowed upon us. We thank you, Father, for the awesome talent of people, Father, that's in this community, the servants, Father, that serve in this community, this board of commissioners, Father, and those that are appointed officials. We thank you for it right now. We thank you for being blessed, Father, with people, Father, that are concerned about their community. And we pray now, Father, that you will bless this council tonight, that you will help them make the right decisions. Father, we realize that decisions that they have to make is tough sometimes, but, God, we just pray that you will give them the wisdom that they may make the right decision. We pray, Father, for those that are gathered here that's concerned about their community as well, that you will bless them. Bless us with your choice of blessings. In these same ways, Father, we will be careful to give you the praise. This we ask in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge and leave.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Terrell Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown. Commissioner Rufus Borman.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
All members are present in the county court, and we have a forum.
Moving on to approval of the minutes. Everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes. Motion to approve.
Second.
This is a motion on the floor to second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Questions called. All in person say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one of the agenda, recognitions and presentations. First up is Azalea Days. May I represent us from Downtown Polack Incorporated? Be you. It's in the spirit of the Azalea Festival, I have a proclamation that reads as follows: Whereas on March 22nd, 1936, the Polack Forum Committee held a local flower and plant show at the Ravine Gardens, which they named the Azalea Festival, at the suggestion of Mrs. Suzie Walton, a member of the committee. Also on March 22nd, 1936, thousands of shrines from all over the southeastern United States participated in the first annual All Florida Shrine Day, also held at the Polack Ravine Gardens. This event was such a huge success, it returned to Ravine Gardens the following year and was held in conjunction with the Junior Chamber of Commerce's JC's Day and the Southeastern Conference also held at the Ravine Gardens. And whereas in 1938, the JC's changed their name, but their event to the Azalea Festival again held at the gardens in conjunction with the All Florida Shrine Day. The event included a beauty pageant, and on February 20th, 1938, Ms. Geraldine Meyer of St. Petersburg was chosen from a field of ten contestants and crowned as the first Azalea Queen. And whereas throughout the years, sixty-three women have been crowned Azalea Queen or Miss Azalea, as the title has come to be known, the pageant qualifier for the Miss Florida competition has seen two of its queens crowned Miss Florida, and one, Ms. Tar Don Hollitt, was also named as Miss America in 1997. And whereas throughout the years, the JC's Azalea Festival always held in early March in conjunction with the Shrine Day, and the Azalea's Queen Pageant grew in change and was held annually for three years during World War II and six years during the 1950s until the Polack JC's was disbanded after the 1996 Azalea Festival. And whereas in 1997, the Putnam County Scholarship Foundation took over sponsorship of the festival and kept the tradition of the festival through the 2003 festival season. In 2005, the Polack Main Street Board of Directors trademarked the name and organized the 59th Azalea Annual Polack Azalea Festival. The 2019 Polack Azalea Festival, organized by Downtown Polack, in March, the 73rd Festival held, which makes it one of the oldest festivals in Florida. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Polack, Florida, together with the members of the Polack City Commission, do hereby proclaim, March 1st through 3rd, 2019, as the 73rd Annual Florida Azalea Festival Days in the City of Polack. And we urge all citizens to take part in the planned events, fun and festivities of this, one of Florida's oldest and most time-honored festivals, and to thank its organizers, both past and present, for their hard work and contribution in our community, to our community's history and heritage, and witness where it appears to set my hand and constantly be affixed to seal the City of Polack, Florida, on this 20th day of February of the year by our Lord, 2019. Terrell Hill, Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borman, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause.
On behalf of Downtown Polack, I would like to thank you graciously, and we appreciate it. And we would really appreciate everybody coming out and supporting the event. And I must say that Sam Deppy is awesome, and without him, this would not happen. So, come out and enjoy the days and support the events that we're doing in Downtown Polack.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, the Azalea Festival kicks off on Friday night at 6:00 at the Bronson Mahoney House with the mayor's reception, and we proceed throughout the weekend in downtown. And it's going to be a wonderful time. Again, we just thank Downtown Polack, Aim for all of its work and all of our community partners who made the Azalea Festival continue on for seventy-three years. We move the agenda forward. Item B, our March of Dimes proclamation will be moved to our next meeting. We've got a presentation for Black History Month, Hometown Hero Award. And so, I guess it's a very interesting time. Our Hometown Hero Award is usually done for folks who, in many ways, are unsung heroes. This recipient is one of those people who many of us don't realize the number of accomplishments that they give us in the community. And so, our hometown hero was born in Polack on May 5th, 1957. He should know by now, he attended Polack South High School before graduating from Creston City High School. He entered the United States Army Reserve in June of 1977, remained in the reserve until retiring in May of 2017. You can come up anytime you're ready. During his military career, he obtained the rank of Command Sergeant Major, which is his highest rank, which is the highest rank for any enlisted man in the United States Army. He's been very active in the Polack community. He's served for approximately twenty-two years on the Gas Authority Board. Served on the board as the Chairman of the Board of the Polack Housing Authority, also served as the Executive Director of the Housing Authority as an interim Executive Director, and served on the board as a President of the Board for Habitat for Humanity. He's an ordained minister and serves as a pastor of Mount Tamo, New Mount Tamo Missionary Baptist Church. He's an entrepreneur, a successful businessman, founded and operating a trucking and rental company by the name of Vickers Rentals Transport. He's married to his lovely wife Shirley, and together they have five children, all of whom were born in Polack. He's a shining example and deserving this recognition, a person who succeeded in both business, serving his community, with family, faith, country, and community holding the highest levels. We salute you today. Our Hometown Hero Award reads as follows: The Polack Pride Hometown Hero Award for Lennington, Command Sergeant Major James Vickers, retired, and grateful recognition of your devotion to the advancement and success of the City of Polack and Putnam County through community advocacy, Polack City Commission and staff, February 28th, 2019. I want to present this to you, sir. And we appreciate that.
Well, it's a surprise, but I'm grateful. But I think, and look back, it was Commissioner Brown many years ago that got me involved with community service, I think, during the time they were doing the impact zone, they put in for that, and since then, it's kind of prolonged. And I also have a newfound respect for those that serve, either appointed or elected officials, because it's an awesome responsibility for them giving their time and things, and sometimes you make tough decisions that your God may not like, but it's been rewarding. I'm just grateful and fortunate to be serving with such professional people on the different various boards that we serve on. Actually, it benefited me and made me the person that I am now, dealing with people from different banks of life, background of life. And so, this time, and I love this city, we have a lot of professionals here, we have a lot of talent here in Polack, and I'm just fortunate that I'm able to serve. Thank you.
Anybody in the comments?
I'd like to say, I'd like to thank him back. When he started, we were asking people, and people were saying, "I don't know, I can't do that." He never hesitated. When Ed had to nudge him a little bit, but he came aboard, and we did an empowerment zone that got us recognition and points towards grants, twenty-five points to all the grants we did for ten years. So it helped us get grant funding for this city for that. He has been an asset to us, and I want to thank him for all the stuff he's done for us.
I'd like to also thank him, certainly thank him for his service in the armed forces. That certainly is warranted to be recognized, and all your additional capacities that you serve and dedicated your commitment to this community. So I want to just thank you to the highest level.
Anyone else? I'd like to say thank you as well, even though we sit in different capacities, you've done just as much as anybody that's sit behind this dais on the different boards that you serve. I really appreciate you for that, also for your commitment this past season with making sure that you got the word out to those around our community with various things that were going on, and I believe you know what I'm talking about. So, we definitely, definitely thank you for all that you have done and will do in the future, so thank you so much.
I'd like to add my thanks also. I've had the privilege of serving as attorney to a couple of the boards that James has been on or in charge of over the last twenty years, and I always found him to be professional and thoughtful, and always interested in doing what was best for the board and the state of Polack, not to mention his military service. It wasn't that many years ago, he served a tour in Afghanistan after having already been in the Army for forty years at that point, which I didn't even know you could serve in the Army any longer than he did. The other thing that always amazed me was, if you ever were around James much or with him in any kind of a sports context, I promise you that last year he was in the Army, you probably could out-shown some of the young recruits in the physical training grill. He always kept himself in that kind of condition, so I just want to add my thanks to everybody else.
I just want to say congratulations. It's very well deserved. I know that I've had the pleasure of working with you as a board member, in and out of different things for the last twenty-one years, and you have quiet leadership, from what I've seen. It's, you know, you're just not a loud person, and you don't have to be. And I joke with him, every time I see him, he looks a little more retired, but not once have I seen a wrinkle in his shirt.
Just Reverend Vickers, you are, you simplify humility and service, and there's nothing more that can be added to what's been said today. And, you know, I thank you for all that you do for this community, for your commitment. You know, I saw you earlier today, you were about six feet down in the ditch working. And, you know, just for a retiree to do some of the things that you do and continue to work in this community, a lot of people don't know how much you do for Polack and how much you love this community, but today, we just want to say thank you for all that you do. We know you don't do it for recognition, but today, we salute you, and so thank you. As we continue on, we've got another recognition for our Black History, for African-American Hall, African-American History Hall of Fame, E.W. Lawson and Son, and DA Boyd Funeral Homes. Vice Mayor, if you could come forward at this time, as well as both the Lawson and Boyd family representatives, if you could come forward at this time and join me in the front of the room.
They gave me two and a half minutes, I was just up.
One and a half.
No, she said one and a half. I asked them to put this on because, I asked them to put this on because we have two businesses that have served this community for many years. The plaque that's been here right there is the nomination that we got along with the number of cities in Florida that are put in the Hall of Fame, and it's South Carolina. No, South Carolina. And then, we got the certificate of nomination, the Boyd family, and these are generations of Boyd's that are here, and their funeral home started in 1928 here in Polack. The Lawson Funeral Home that got on the end is my son, and he's our fourth generation. I think these guys are fourth generation too, fourth and fifth generation. Third, third generation. We got fifth generation coming up too. I asked him to put it on too because we are seeing where history has been made. And history has been made, we see people all the time from other places, but history has been made here in this town. It's hard for somebody to stay married ten years now, so having a business with your family for that long a time is something. I also wanted to say that I hope this is visible and encourage some of our folks that are in business to work hard to stay in business and to pass it along to your children. My grandmother made me promise that I would do it for mine, and I kind of brought it in to do it now. This is, we wanted you all to know that. Two cities in our town were nominated for this award, and we're the only ones that had two in it.
Well, on behalf of the DA Boyd and Son Funeral Home, we know the legacy was left by our grandfather, and he was a real instrumental person in not only our lives, but our father's lives and our mother's lives. And they made us dedicate as well that we will continue to keep that dignity and that well-deserved service that Polack deserves and the citizens of Polack. Mr. Joseph T. Monroe, our Executive Director, has taken the place of Mr. Charlie Boyd, who we lost last year, unfortunately, but the drum still beats on, and we're glad to be a part of it.
Can I have a permission?
Can we all fit? Can we all fit?
One, two, three.
You all do have a kind of young.
Wait, Logan.
My business started by my grandparents. E.W. Lawson and W. R. Lawson.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes, sir.
Am I being directed to do this?
Yes, sir.
Let's give another round of applause to both of the Lawson and Boyd families. Collectively, almost two hundred years of service in the City of Polack. Next up, special presentation by Mr. Jim Troyano, St. Joseph's Water Management District. We always like when you come here.
He has a new look.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Do you have a police? Mr. Graham, just going to start out. Commissioners, we're lucky enough to have the Water Management District here tonight to grant us another $500,000 in cost share funds. This project is for multiple line replacement, approximately thirty-four hundred linear feet of water lines to be replaced just west of Sixth Street, North Sixth Street, and just north of Madison Street. This will be Phase Five of the current initiative. And Jim, just reminded me, this is a total of $3.5 million they've given.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, citizens of Polack, it's my honor again. I feel at home here. This is several checks that I've been able to deliver, but I want to talk about partnerships first, and I've talked about that in the past, from the mayor and staff coming to our governing board meetings and talking about the need here in Polack, things that are necessary from a drinking water standpoint. And then through the applications that we receive from city staff, both Jonathan and Mandy, they've done a great job. Their applications have been excellent, the cooperation that we have is outstanding, they basically are family members of ours, they come in, they're meeting with staff. So it's through all of that collective hard work that our governing board, last year, recognized this project. And so, on behalf of our governing board, our Executive Director, Dr. Ann Shortell, I would like to present this check to the City of Polack in the amount of $500,000. So I would congratulate you again on the job well done. We also have a cost share project, a project that's open now, and we'll know in the next few months whether you qualify for up to, you know, a little over a million dollars in projects. So, again, I ask you to continue to apply. We want to continue looking, but it's based on good projects and a scoring system, and you all have done very well so far. So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, present this check to you and your commission. Congratulations and job well done. Can we take a picture together?
Yes, wonderful. Well, right now, we are currently in construction on the Water Management District grant that we got booked for, this one, which is the Polack Heights Project. This one will start mid to late April, and we're looking very much forward to hearing how we did with the cost share application that we just turned in.
Good job. Just don't try to cash it.
I thought she needed to come get the ticket. Nobody get it.
One, two, three. And again, we just want to thank the district for all that you do for the City of Polack. You're a great community partner. That's based right here in Polack. Out of all the locations that you have offices, we're glad that your home base is Polack. Mr. Troyano, you've been a godsend for us, as well as the board, and we thank you guys for all that you've been able to do to help us as we move forward with our infrastructure projects. Mandy Tucker, who's been very instrumental along with Jonathan Griffith, we thank you guys for all your work, and we're moving forward, piece by piece, on this ten-point plan to make sure that we continue to build a greater infrastructure for the City of Polack. So again, thank you guys, and you deserve to be commended. Commissioner Campbell, if you can join me at this time. I don't like everybody that stood up and must have been canceled. As we come forward today, it's a great opportunity for us to celebrate our young people, and this is the moment that many of you patiently have been waiting for. You know, our youth are the greatest resource that we have in this community, and we've got to continually cultivate it. It takes a village to raise a child, and we all have a very important role to play in this process. We want to make sure that we recognize all of our family and friends who joined these youth today, who've been the greatest portion of what's there. More family and community participation in life, young folks will continually help this district grow, and the mayor that it's been growing. And so, at this time, if we can have our parents, family, and friends who join our other areas, if you could stand at this time, so we can give you a round of applause. Thank you very much. I'll be remiss if I don't recognize a very special person in the back of this room, former county commissioner Nancy Harris. And also, one of our very special attorneys is also here, Ms. Parks, Stand Up For Us. So as we move forward, there's another group of individuals that we always have to thank for all that they do, and it's our educators. Many times, they don't hear thank you enough for the sacrifices that they make, for the commitment that they have for our students, and we just want to make sure that we continually say thank you to our educators, who are usually somewhere in the halls and in the back of the room, but they're here dedicated every time to work with our young people, and we want to make sure that we thank them. So if you guys could just wave your hand, we want to say thank you. Tonight, we've also got our graduation coordinator who's here. Polack, our Putnam County School District has the largest growth of graduation rate out of any school district in the state of Florida. One of our graduation coordinators, Ms. Pamela Brown, is in the audience. Will you just stand up for us right now? We want to hear you guys' applause. So as we call the students' names, we'll have a representative from the school come forward. We'll have the students come forward. As they come forward, we will assemble around the front of the room. Once we finish, we'll take a recess so that everyone will have an opportunity to take pictures with their family members. I got you. We'll take pictures, and so that you can commemorate this event. And before we do that, our superintendent's here tonight, so we're going to ask him to come forward and join the Commissioner's Board as we move through this process tonight. Mr. Rick Cericy. Commissioner Campbell changed his name in the forum today. So we're here, so we've got a special guest. We always take this opportunity to work with our special guest. So first up, as we continue on, from Brown and Chris Elementary School, Mr. James Bridges. From CL Lumber Turf Sixth Grade Center, Caleb Johns. From the Children's Reading Center Charter School, Kendall Wilkinson. From EH Miller School, Shaquilla Sweet. From James A. Long Elementary School, Cameron Helms. And also the granddaughter, the superintendent. From Jenkins Middle School, Markeith Holbrook. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Park Port. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Park Patel. From Millen Elementary, Serenity Femas. From Mosley Elementary, Aiden Cody. Our Palacka High, Patrick Harris. From Penn Abbotus Academy, Mackenzie Black. And from Public Academy of Arts and Sciences, Bailey Hallbrook. Mr. Cericy, any words before I close out?
You said plenty, Mayor, but I'm so, thank you for having me, and I'll be glad to come more often, but I just happened to be here tonight with my granddaughter. It's indeed a privilege to come up here and hand out these distinguished awards, and you guys represent, you know, what our school district is all about, and you've excelled at your school, and we're so happy for you. And just keep up the good work, and again, thank you to all the educators for all the hard work you put in. This is our next generation, so we need to honor them and appreciate what they're doing. So thank you again, and let's give them another round of applause.
And I always like to leave you guys with the same, and Commissioner McCausland knows it all too well. As a third grader, Miss Thomasina Green's class, every day, we're reciting a poem, and it simply says, "I am somebody. If my mind can't conceive it and my heart can't believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." You guys are someone special. You're destined for greatness, and we are so proud of you. Continue to do what you're doing educationally and in the community, and we look forward to you standing up and being the leaders of this community. So again, we thank you and we love you. Congratulations. At this time, we'll take a brief recess. We want all our students to stay here. We're gonna take a picture for the newspaper quickly, and then we'll line up to take individual photos with your family. Again, we stand in recess. We're back on the record. Item number two on the agenda is public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one here, we will close public comment. We're gonna take one item out of order, and that's gonna be our big core city manager, Mr. Holmes. Do you want to give us the information as of may update the city manager search?
Yes, I will, thanks. As you know, the commission asked a committee consisting of Deborah Robinson, myself, and Mr. Martinez to sort through the 21 or so applications that had been, that had made it through the first cut, and pick 10 or less for the commission to review and deal with in whatever fashion the commission chooses to do so. I wanted, Mr. Martinez wanted me to be especially mindful to tell all of you that he asked Ms. Robinson to provide him the 21 applications after redacting out the name, age, sex, and race of the applicant, so that he was looking at the application without that information in front of him. Ms. Robinson advised me that I asked that mine be redacted accordingly, so Mr. Martinez and I reviewed the applications without that information on the application. That was name, age, sex, race. I think that was the extent of it. We met after reviewing the applications, Ms. Robinson and myself and Mr. Martinez, and the eight that we came up with, which Ms. Robinson will provide to you, are those that we all agreed upon after discussions, and those were the eight that we felt were the most qualified for you to choose from. Did I miss something?
I don't think so.
Next steps.
Next steps is I have the information for you guys to be distributed, and I guess we need to set a timeframe for a meeting with everyone at the commission so that we can kind of find out where you are with the elimination process so that we can move to the next step.
Let's do that.
What do you mean, elimination process?
I mean, after the elimination process.
I have those to distribute to you.
And you want us to set a timeframe, so.
How long is it gonna take all of you to review those?
The eight, correct?
Yes. And at this point, we want to involve the gentleman from Florida League in that process as well.
Are we still doing the video interviews, and so will it be on the eight or the three? Or however we.
You to tell me how you want to help you with that elimination process. I would say on the eight, because it gives you an opportunity to see all eight, to narrow down to the few that you want.
I concur.
Have the eight applicants been notified that they're in the final?
Not as of yet.
Okay, and then you would have to notify them, and how much time would you give them in order to get the video and get it to us? Because I think that's when we'll be able to.
Seventy-two hours is a good time.
I think if we, when you disseminate the stuff, that'll give us a good idea of what we're working with with the eight. So I think in the midst of that, if there are problems or a doubt, I think the turnaround time should be rather quick. So I say, if we can do it. If we can do it, it doesn't, I think it won't take me two weeks to do it, like, till they sit down.
Well, we need, we need good.
You could do two a day and be good.
We need a good amount of time to make sure we go through and do, because there's that process that you have in place that when we do our screening and verification and the whole night, I don't know, I need about two weeks.
Well, when I say two weeks.
Well, the make, I'm working too.
No, that's, within two weeks, you should be able to review, and then when we come in, let me be specific. I feel like we can wrap this part up within two weeks, including the interviews if they were to come in.
Okay. Because this information can go out tomorrow.
That's what I was, that's my question. How soon are you gonna inform them and give them time enough, within seventy-two hours to get their videos to us? We'll have this information tonight.
I reckon so, a week.
You're right. Yeah.
Whatever y'all decide, I'm quiet. Now tell me, we have two weeks?
Make a recommendation, and let's go with it.
Commissioner says he needs two weeks. You said you need two weeks.
So I motion to, for us to meet back within two weeks.
So next meeting, we'll have, what are we doing then?
That'll be the three.
That'll be the three.
We'll be down on your three.
So we're gonna, so we're gonna rank them and pick the three for.
For your interviews.
Prior to, prior to our next meeting.
That's okay.
Just to make sure I understand, you're gonna rank MS and narrow it down to three before the next meeting?
Or not rank, just pick your five, pick your three finalists.
But we'll use that matrix, right? Or we have a matrix to use?
She gave us, she gave us.
So we're reducing the three by next meeting. Are we gonna have, let's set a special meeting at five o'clock, so we can do that.
You've already got your regular meeting in two weeks.
We got a regular meeting in two weeks, but we'll do it at five o'clock. We'll go ahead and have that meeting to do that, just so it has its own time period.
Okay.
Okay, you know we go to Tallahassee.
We'll be back from there.
And you won't be here again.
We got South Florida for FTC Leo. Prior to that, we'll be back from FTC Leo.
You'll be back from that.
And then Tallahassee, like the sixteenth or seventeenth.
I haven't even signed.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor. There's a second by Commissioner Borum. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing questions, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, very quietly. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So we'll, we got the process by, in two weeks, next meeting, we'll have a reduction. Thank you. Moving forward, item three on the agenda is the consent agenda. We've got items A through F on the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that we wish to have removed at this time? This motion on the floor in the second, is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Want to make sure we recognize Mr. Alessco, who's in the back of the room, from Passero and Associates. And so, again, we thank you guys for the work that you've done with the airport here, and we look forward to our continuing working relationship.
I don't see anyone from Mars, she even emailed me after I called.
And so, so we got, item four on the agenda, there's no one here from the ARX Council at this time with their request for renovations. Did we have them on the agenda last time?
We did.
I make a motion that we tailor this item and do not put it back home and to keep note for sure that someone will be here to represent.
She's only, she's only gonna be here.
This is the second time?
Three strikes, yeah.
Second.
This is the second time?
Yeah.
Why can't we just move, take it, just take it off?
We're taking it off. There's a motion on, there's a motion on the floor to take it off the agenda.
Second.
Motion on the floor in the second, any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item five on the agenda is public hearing. Item five is an ordinance for 3010 Browns Landing Road. Planning Board recommendation to rezone 237 acres adjacent to the Black Drew wastewater treatment plant at Browns Landing from R3 residential multifamily to OR open rural and 21.67 acres of city wastewater treatment plant to PBG2 other public facilities, city of Palacka, only applicant first reading, Mr. Lachman.
An ordinance of the city of Palacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palacka, Florida be amended from Putnam County R-3 residential multifamily to city PBG-2 other public facilities and city or open rural, sorry, and city OR open rural for the following property, 310 Browns Landing Road, Section 24, Township 10, South Range 26 East, providing per separability and providing an effective date.
This is a motion on the floor in the second. Before we go through that, Mr. Lachman, do you have anything?
Aye, no, sir.
Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Lachman. We've done the update on the city manager selection, city manager administrative report and administrative reports. We have to thank our department.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you guys being here. Chill.
No, sir.
Really? Mr. Lachman.
We've got a new agenda next week for both planning boards and for the maintenance board, so just connectivity.
Planning Board, Historic Preservation Board for next week. Chief.
Your fate commissioner is not gonna be able to attend tomorrow night because I'll be at the basketball game, I'm sure.
She's going to bike.
You're gonna see your face. She's gonna come forward for a second. You want everybody in TV letting you in.
Your fate said it all. Does she want to say something? Yes, sir.
So Chief, what were you saying before?
I just wanted to inform you that unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the mayor's reception tomorrow night.
Why? What unfortunate event has occurred that keeps you from going?
We will be hosting the third round of playoffs for the high school basketball team, which I will be in attendance.
And what's your capacity there?
I am a coach.
And also? What's your relation to Sean Shaw?
I am a father.
That's a man.
And so Chief, again, on behalf of the city of Palacka, unfortunately, we all have to be at the mayor's reception. I got a feeling Commissioner Borum's gonna sneak out, and Commissioner Campbell as well. But the mayor's reception's gonna be a wonderful event. I'm sad that it's on the same day as that basketball game, but I will be texting somebody for updates. And again, we want to congratulate the Panthers on a job well done, made it to the third round. Look forward to seeing you guys in Lakeland, so congratulations. I don't know if Ms. Bridges is gonna excuse you for tomorrow, but you got pretty good reasons.
He's excused.
From what I've been understanding throughout the playoffs, there has been plenty of live streaming of the games.
And so, again, yes, thank you. The Panthers just went down two games to the East side and won by one point against a team that only had one loss in the year. One or two, two losses. They were 25-2, number two in the state.
Wow.
And you're number four, right?
No, sir, we were number six.
Okay. So again, great job in a hostile territory. And so, great job there. Ms. Robinson, we've heard everything, is there anything else for us?
Oh, my right, yes.
Don't forget to mention that good food, you know.
It's been a fit ride on the 17th of February, where we had about 70 bikers that came into the city of Palacka. And I can't thank the city of Palacka's PD, thank you very much, and Putnam County Sheriff's Department that collaborated together to escort these 70 bikers from the airport through interlocking and bring them back up to the riverfront. So it was a really good day, we had a really good time, and they were excited to see what we had going on in Palacka. So thank you so much for that.
Mr. Griffith? Just want to share some quick pictures. Inspector, you got this. I hope, I don't know if you can see that, but as you're all aware, we've been sandblasting and painting the clock tower. Not us, actually, but a contractor. Just wanted to show you some of the stuff that wasn't evident when the clock tower was actually up. There's a lot of rust that needed to be addressed. This is one of the circle details. You can see inside the tower there, and then if you keep progressing, this, one more, this is all the bad stuff. This is what it looks like after it's blasted. I apologize, I wasn't able to get any pictures today of it actually painted, but as you can see, we're getting down to good metals that was primed every day when it was blasted. And hopefully, we're looking to schedule the installation of the tower within the next month, the two months.
Orient's slightly 11 degrees off.
That's still up for debate, yeah.
And so, I got a chance to go down yesterday and look at the clock tower. Accidentally, it looked burned it. And so it's great renovation on the clock tower for those who are interested. It will continue to keep correct time twice a day.
Can you tell us about the south night, the north night, Third Street? I'm sorry.
North Third Street, they're still continuing to make progress. We didn't have the brick throughout there to date because of the rain last night, but I did get communication from contractors that the concrete sub is due back out on Monday for more curb, and the brick contractor is due back out on Monday. So we'll continue to monitor it. We actually have a progress meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock.
And so since the last time we were here, we actually have two blocks completed of actual, three blocks completed of actual brickwork, and there are only, there's only a block and a half left to go putting down the base and then putting down the new bricks and the curbs. And so we're hoping, and the last, and they did that other portion, about three days almost.
And more importantly, there's no more debris or equipment on the Bronx routes for the mayor's reception.
Or Madison Street.
Yes.
And so it's looking good.
Yes, the neighbors are on great.
Yes, they are.
And for, and Ninth Street, looks like there's some progress being made as well.
Sanitary sewer tie-in should happen in the next couple of days, and you'll see them putting water lines in down towards Oak eventually.
We went through Black Heights and saw additional installation of water lines as well. And so all throughout the city, we're seeing work being done in various parts of the community. So those who see the streets and the inconvenience of those streets being what they are, just remember that's a sign of progress being made. And so we thank you for your patience, and we definitely thank Ms. Brown for her patience and her smile today. So again.
My phone was back on.
So we can continue. And so she's happy now. Moving forward, Ms. Tucker, you have anything?
Briefly, I'd like to say that we're all gearing up speed to get the reception underway tomorrow.
Get underway, over.
Let's just, let's just get through it. Ms. Robinson has been wonderful in helping as well as all of the public works department pitching in, so we're looking forward to being there, buddy.
And definitely, so we thank you guys for the work that you've done. Ms. Bridges thanks you because she gets a chance to take a break.
I just get to show up and enjoy my coffee.
And so, and again, we thank our sponsors for all that they're doing with this product as well. We hate that we won't have this at your Queens this year.
Yeah. No Queens.
And so, moving forward, Ms. Bridges, what do you have for us today? I'm sorry, Ms. Becker.
Oh.
I was trying to...
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say that I'm looking forward to attending the mayor's reception tomorrow. I'll be there, so, I don't have anything.
That's good. Ms. Bridges.
I'm sure we're going to have ample, I'm sure we're going to have ample representation from the police department tomorrow at the mayor's reception, like we always do. I have made the reservations for the Florida League of Cities Legislative Action Days in Tallahassee. I just need to know if you're going to attend. So, people coming in on the 25th, checking out on the 27th.
Also, we finally got the dates for Rural Counties Day, and so, in Tallahassee as well.
April 16.
Right. And so, I'm going to ask the commission if you can make it, to make it, because we're trying to have a huge representation from Putnam County there. We've got caterers coming in and the works, and so we definitely want to make sure that you guys come, if you're only going to be there for just a day or whatever.
Do we want to sponsor, because they are selling levels of sponsorships. For a $300 level, you get everything that you would get with a $750, except for, with $750, you get two tickets to the reception, but they're only $25 a piece.
We need $300.
Turn the math.
So you can, we can, we don't need motion for that. Anything else, Ms. Bridges?
That's it.
Job well done. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
I don't have anything.
Vice Mayor?
I wanted to surprise you, Nick.
Did you?
She said something.
She got her phone back on. And again, and by the way, congratulations, and again, congratulations on your, on your award, and for the legacy of the Lawson family as well, and the work that's been put into place. And so, anytime a business has been here for over 100 years, that is major, and the contributions of your grandparents and your parents and you as well, and continuing that legacy and passing it on for generations, is something to be commended. And in your wisdom on this commission and your service for the last three decades and a half, we appreciate you, and we salute you as a Black history legend in Palatka.
I just had my picture?
No. You have to have that.
I can't, I can't do that because I said that to my...
I wrote that a couple of years ago.
So we are going to give you your flowers while you yet live.
Thank you. Because I can't eat the soup either.
As we continue on with our funeral conversation, Commissioner Campbell.
All right, I just really want to say, I've been hearing a lot of great things about things that are going on around the City of Palatka. We can't always say that was the case, and now, just to hear the positive dialogue about the infrastructure changes and just the vibrancy that we are now getting here in the city, it means a lot to me. It lets us know that sitting behind this diocese, what we're doing is not in vain. So just, everyone, let's keep up the hard work, let's keep doing what we do to make this city what this city is, because as we always say, this one day will be the vibrant city, to where those from around will know Palatka vibrant and what we have here to offer. So we definitely, definitely want to make sure that we stay moving this city forward.
Thank you. Commissioner McCaskill?
No comment.
Commissioner Borum?
No comments tonight.